Okay. Good evening, each of you all who've come tonight to our city council meeting on December the 2nd. Glad to see each and every one of you. We try to move through our agenda tonight. We do have, I think, one person absent tonight, Debbie Pollard. She has called today and she's had some type of medical, not emergency, just a procedure today that asked if she could be excused tonight. And I said, sure, you need to recover, so Debbie Pollard will not be with us tonight. But I would ask each of you, if you would, if you have maybe a cellphone you're carrying, to try to either silence it, or turn it off, or if you need to use it, just step outside and you're welcome to do that. And as always, we like to say our pledge allegiance to our flag, so if you do that with me now, I'd appreciate that.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Stephanie Cooper, would you please call the roll, please?
Trey.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Elsie.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Debbie's absent.
Okay, that being, roll being called, seven are present, so we have our quorum, and I'd like to now call the meeting to order. You have the agenda before you tonight. Anyone wish to make any corrections, deletions, or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion made by Elsie Carter, second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. You've also have received your minutes as of last Wednesday. If you would like to, we will dispense from reading those minutes. If you've had a chance to look at them, and I'll entertain a motion for that to be done when you're ready.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Motion made by Joel Davenport. Is there a second? Second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion before you? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving right along, let's look at your payables for the month. Anyone have any questions or concern about any of the payables at this time?
No questions, Mayor, I'll make a motion. Will you approve the financial, the payables?
Okay, motion made by Joel Davenport, a second to that motion.
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving right along, you have your financials in front of you. Any, anything whatsoever with any part of the financial statement that you'd like to ask a question about?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question that was just brought to my attention, actually. Under bank accounts?
Yes, sir.
We have a figure called police drug forfeits. They had $29,000 and $441 in Stockyards Bank. Is that shown on our budget at the beginning of the fiscal year? Is that a budget item, or how does that, how does that occur? And what happens to that money?
It's, let me think on that one, Mayor. Sitting in the bank at the budget, at the beginning of the budget year, I'm trying to think, on cash on hand, that, that would probably be our total cash on hand at the moment, all counts accounted for. As we expend that out, I guess the police, the chief of police would expend that based on a, an expenditure that would fit that category. Corey Adams, you're here tonight representing the chief, do you have anything to add to that line item on the, the question that Mayor, former Mayor Bill Lamline has as to when and how that is spent and how it's accounted for?
As far as the expenditures, I wouldn't be able to comment on that, that would have to be referred to Chief Collette. The, was it the forfeiture line item that was listed?
Yes, yes, under bank accounts.
Okay, that would be more than likely assets or monies that are seized throughout the court process.
I understand where it comes from.
Correct.
But is that part of our budget at the beginning? In the police budget, is there a line item, we're going to collect $30,000 this year, and we're going to spend it this way? Or is that just a figure that happens over the year? Because I've never seen, I've never noticed that before, for some reason, it brought to my attention.
I would have to refer that inquiry to Chief Collette.
All right.
It's been there each and every report, Bill, on our bank accounts to every, every month this year, is what that account balance is, but far as figuring into the anticipated expenditures for the year, I would say it's not.
Yeah.
It's just an account balance in all these categories that we've carried for years, and I guess when it's spent, and spent out totally, it will be gone.
Yeah.
Unless we find more drug forfeiture money to replenish it. Would that be correct, Corey?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Is that good enough?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, anyone else have any other question that pertains to financials at all?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Elsie Carter to approve the financials. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright. Any further discussion on the motion before the council? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Once again, you always have the opportunity to come before the city council to present an idea, a question, or concern before the council. We'll give you four minutes to make your presentation. In event we want to extend that, the council will have the ability to extend your time if so needed. So anybody here tonight to speak on behalf of yourself to the council in public comment time. No one? Okay, we'll close that portion of the council meeting. Moving right along, LaGrange Main Street report. Ms. Sandy Fokes.
Good evening, you all. Can you hear me this time? I'm getting the hang of this microphone thing finally. Just wanted to give you all an update from last Saturday. Of course, last Saturday was, November 30th, was Small Business Saturday, so to celebrate, Main Street hosted a Shop Small Visitor Station at 127 East Main, the old Karen's Book Barn and Comic Book Store. Despite the rain, the stores reported very good sales that day. We handed out our Shop Small tote bags for the first hundred visitors. We had holiday music, and we posted specials from all of the merchants. We also did a holiday shopping list that we listed all of the stores, put what their specials were and their hours were for Friday and Saturday, and then gave them, people the opportunity to take that list with them, and they could write names of people while they were shopping, as to where they had shopped and bought gifts from. Went very, very well. We also had free gift wrapping and kids' craft projects from the Girl Scout group here in town, it's Troop 1013. So I had a great time hanging out with them. In fact, they asked if they could come back and do it again next year. So it worked out really well, even despite the rain. The stores had very good sales, and traffic was pretty good considering that torrential downpour we had. So that went really, really well. You may have known, in extending that, the LaGrange Farmers Market and Artisan Market is extended into that holiday season, so they'll be open in that same space on the 7th, the 14th, the 21st, throughout the day, to, and I believe they have 13 to 16 different artisans that will be there on those three Saturdays to help promote and, and extend that farmer's market. They will also be open the night of Light Up LaGrange for us, so.
Could you, could you explain that more so, and definite where they're going to be, so the people at home, maybe the people here as well?
Oh, gosh, absolutely.
Will know exactly where we're talking about doing this temporary farmer's market through winter, so where would that be actually?
The official address is 127 East Main. Most people know it as that corner of Walnut and Main Street, where Karen's Book Barn used to be, and where the comic book store was. So the big storefront there, right on the corner, so you can't miss it. There's three big windows there that will all be displayed and lit up too. So officially 127 East Main, but most people refer to it as the bookstore.
And when the former comic book store?
Yep, the comic book store, J.C. Comics was there most recently.
Okay.
So we hope to see lots and lots of people there. The, the farmer's market folks were very excited to be able to do that, have a big space to set up. So that response hopefully will draw in lots of people as well. Lots of good shopping going on there. The monthly Main Street Merchant Meeting will be this Wednesday, December 4th, at 8:00, at City Place, so invitations have gone out, the email and Facebook.
Speak a little louder, please.
A little louder than that. That's, yeah, I'm so shy.
Way.
Over here. I probably had my arm on it again. So, so also, as everybody knows, this Saturday is Light Up LaGrange, so the festivities will begin on Friday night with the family movie night at Southeast Christian. The doors will open at 5:00 for that event, so you can bring the family and come have popcorn and watch a family movie. Then we have breakfast with Santa at, at Hometown Pizza on Saturday morning, as well as a little later in the day, they'll have Santa and have some events going on at the History Center, as well as at the Railroad Museum. Music and choirs will be at City Place and the Community Center. They'll have family activities at City Place, the Community Center, the Railroad Museum, the History Center, and on the courthouse lawn, so lots going on that day. And we all know Santa will arrive at the courthouse via the fire truck. He'll meet Mayor Black there at 6:00 to officially flip the switch, Light Up LaGrange, and, and lots of new lights up this year. Corey and the guys, hats off to them, they've been stringing lights for a couple weeks now. It's going to be beautiful, so I can't wait to see that happen. Complete schedule of events and performances, you can find that at lagrangemainstreet.org, on the Facebook page. Also something new that we're doing this year, we'll have a Google Map phone app that people can access, and if they type in Light Up LaGrange, it will show a Google map of where the events are happening, with little icons with music for the musical things, San, a little icon for Santa that will show up at the barn, and all the events that are happening throughout the evening. People could just access that on their phone. We'll also have, of course, posted online, and we'll have our directional signs on the corners and on the big trees with that, but it'll be nice for people to be able to use that on their phone as well with that app. We thank Julie from Manly Signs for doing that for us. It'll be a great thing for people to be able to access that. Another new thing we've added this year is Way FM will be broadcasting live from Light Up LaGrange from 5:00 till 8:00 p.m. from the courthouse lawn, so that'll be really fun as well. So there's other meetings and projects. Mercantile on Main is moving into, as we said, 127 East Main. That will happen in February, so they are taking up and expanding into that space. There's a, the current Merc on Main location was tentative, leaving reopen with a brand new merchant. That will help, they will start setting up in there mid-January and be up and running February 1st as well.
Excuse me? Did you say someone's going to go in where Mercantile on Main's leaving?
Yes.
They are?
My understanding is, I don't know that they've made it a public, you know, a public announcement yet, but they, they intend to be moving in as Jody's moving down the street to 127.
Did the council fully understand that? Mercantile on Main's going to be moving down to where the comic book store moved out of, and someone will be taking Mercantile on Main's place? Okay.
Exactly, you got it. And as we know, Copper Onie has also moved to its new location. They opened on Friday at 200 West Jefferson, which was the, the former Ty's Furniture Building. So, and the store, I would encourage, if you haven't been down there yet, get down there, because it is beautiful. They have so much more space there, and, and the store looks gorgeous. I was in there Friday, and it was, it was amazing. It's good to see a lot of things happening, a lot moving. As we know, the preparations are in the works for the LaGrange Arts Fest that first weekend of June, so we're getting applications in for that, and more plans will be coming forward with that. Social media analytics, our monthly page was 45, 45,500, so we've had a lot of traffic, a lot of things going on, and events happening that's really raised that. It's about, up about 12,000 page views from last month, which is great to see. As of today, we had 6,309 Facebook followers, so we're up about 78 people there. On Instagram, we're up to 1383, so we added 13 this month. And on Twitter, we have 1,158 followers. So what have I forgotten that you all would like to know? If you look at the back page too, there is.
Can you tell us about the Wi-Fi signs that are going up?
I should have brought those, Beach, I did not. We actually have produced some metal Wi-fis, and, and again, hats off to, to Julie for getting those done for us. We did new directional blades for the signs, the, the post signs for Light Up LaGrange. She used the excess of those to make metal, and I'm going to say heat-protected and USB-protected signs promoting our free Wi-Fi on Main Street. So we'll work on getting those put in on all of the posts, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn here, I'm letting the cat out of the bag. We're working to get those installed onto the, the tables at the gazebo's and the tables in front of the courthouse as well, so when folks are there, they can use that free Wi-Fi.
And, and for.
I forgot about that beach.
And for those that don't know, the secret password is LaGrange.
LaGrange.
Don't tell anybody.
Top secret, yeah, don't tell anybody. Don't let the cat out of the bag. So those will be going up as well, as soon as we get final approval. And as you can see here, so just to run down, for City Place Pavilion 2, starting at 4:30 through 6:30, we'll have performances. 4:30 will be Camden Elementary, at 5:00 will have Centerfield, 5:30 will have Locust Grove, at 6:30 we'll have North Oldham High School. In City Place Pavilion 1, we'll have candy cane making from 3:30 till 8:00. In the, the Dogland Pioneer Barn, we'll have hot cocoa and photo ops, and then from 6:30 to 9:00 will be the visits with Santa. So the Community Center will also have Oldham County Middle School Band from 5:40 till 6:00, and then actually, we've just recently made a change, we're going to do the cookie decorating, we're actually extending the cookie decorating. Instead of just going from 6:15 to 8:00, they will actually start at 3:00 and go earlier in the day and go before Santa arrives as well, to keep, to keep the kids entertained while they're getting all sugared up for Santa. On the courthouse lawn, we'll have reindeer food making, we'll have letters to Santa with the LaGrange Post Office, the kids can actually do their letters and put them in a giant mailbox for Santa. We'll have some other vendors joining us there as well, with hot cocoa and different activities, and picture frame making, and some fun things to keep the kids entertained. From 5:00 till 6:00, Oldham County Community Band will be at Rob Morris Chapel. 5:00 to 8:30 at Ide, Ide Claire will be at LaGrange Coffee Roasters, and Prather Gallery is hosting the Oldham County Jazz Band from 6:30 to 8:30. And of course, the Railroad Museum will be open as well, and taking kids on tours and families on tours there, and have events going on. So it'll be a full day of events, we'll be very busy on Saturday.
And what time do they start officially Saturday?
3:00.
3:00.
Start officially at 3:00.
Somewhere in and around Main Street they will begin, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll have activities up and down Main Street on the courthouse lawn. Of course, the stores will be open. If you haven't seen, also, we're doing a little internal competition with the storefront decorating. If you have not seen the windows yet, you've got to go see them. They look beautiful, and I'm excited to see who wins the contest. It's stiff competition this year.
Yeah, I think the town is really going to look sharp this year, not that it hasn't all years, but Corey and all his efforts, and your efforts, and everyone's efforts, I think, will show up Saturday night about 6:00.
That's right.
Correct?
Because I hear that, that Santa and someone else might be flipping a giant switch to turn the lights on. Did I hear that right, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, here's what I'm suggesting on that. I want the city council, please, we're going to have a stage up in front of the courthouse doors, and I'd like for the, all the city council, if you can be there, to be there, because I need, I will need help to flip this switch, and what I'd like to do, we'll start with Beach being number nine, and then the city council beat, Andrea will beat eight, and Bill will be seven, and Elsie beat, what number you want to be, Elsie?
Five.
Five, okay? And so we'll count this thing down, so each city council person will, could be up on this stage, it's going to be in front of the courthouse with Santa Claus, correct?
Correct.
And when whoever's number one, they'll flip the switch, you know, maybe I can help or whatever, but I would like the city council to be there. For those viewing out in the world here tonight, from Chicago, Indianapolis, Cincinnati, this is going to be huge here in LaGrange, Kentucky, this Saturday, December 7th, please don't miss it. From Louisville and surrounding areas, this is going to be one heck of a light-up show, bigger than Light Up Louisville, or what's that in Louisville, they call it?
Light Up Louisville?
At Irvingtown?
Oh, Thunder, Thunder over Louisville?
Thunder over Louisville, this is going to be bigger. So this will be actually bigger than Thunder over Louisville, if anybody can believe that.
Maybe you all could do a dance routine.
This is being produced by LaGrange Public Works. So can't wait, the city council's going to be there, I hope, and we're going to have a good time, and.
And the fire trucks, don't forget Santa's coming in on the fire trucks.
Fire truck, it's going to be just absolutely, and I think the weather's going to be cooperating this year, I do believe.
It's going to be beautiful, yeah.
The weather sounds like it's going to be good, so there's going to be all kinds of activities on Main Street. You're going to have music on your front porch, Elsie, that night, so we're going to do that. Loose Change will be there, I think, it's the name of the band there, so we're just hoping for a big, exciting night.
Dance routine, Mr. Mayor? Maybe the city council could choreograph a dance routine?
Well, we like to dance too, so just tell us what we got to do.
Very good. It's going to be a party, no doubt.
Okay, well, does anyone else have anything for Sandy? I will say, I think Beach was, Beach Craigmaw, I think he was the one who was pushing for these Wi-Fi signs. I believe he's been doing that for a couple years, and I, I give credit where credit's due.
Absolutely.
And he wants people to know how to get on Wi-Fi in LaGrange, Kentucky, right, Mr. Craigmaw?
Yeah, it's been up for a couple years, and, but we just, I don't think people know how to use it, so.
Okay.
We've got a nice, strong antenna, and goes up and down around two blocks.
And the signs look great.
The signs look great.
And the Train Cam, Train Cam's doing well, correct?
Train Cam, yes, actually, you know, Joe, you asked about that last time. I did give a little bit of information, I want to dig a little deeper, but 170,000 subscribers to the Train Cam overall, and they get about seven and a half million views a month from 220 different countries. I've asked them to dig down a little deeper and let us know who's looking specifically at LaGrange, and where they're coming from, and what opportunities there might be for us with that. And I have not gotten that information back, but as soon as I get it, I will make sure that you all have it.
Well, what we, what we could.
It's increased a lot then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really, yeah.
What we could possibly do on Light Up LaGrange, we could get right in the center of that railroad track, this city council could, and we could say, just start waving, hello, America. Hello, America, come and see us right here in LaGrange. So that cam goes all over the world.
It does, and we get quite a few comments from people who see things happening on LaGrange Main Street. The, the T-Rex thing was, was huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got great, great hits off of that and great comments, so we know it's there, and we know it's working.
Thank you very much, Sandy, for coming.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I would like to wish Copper Onie, their new location, beautiful store.
Beautiful store.
Beautiful store, I was in there yesterday, they've done a fabulous remake of that store. It really looks good, and I think they, they're taking reservations now for a boost, they're filled up totally, so congratulations to Copper Onie and the former Ty's Supplies Store. So, thank you so much.
Nice question.
Sir.
Just, sorry, the, since you brought it up, the LaGrange Art Fest, is that something new, or?
That is, that is something that we'll.
Speak in the microphone, please.
Oh, so sorry. Yes, that is something new we'll be adding as a new event for LaGrange. The thought was, you know, people are so used to the arts on the green, this will be something that we can do that, that would be kind of a supplement to that, be a little different spin, put a little, that LaGrange attitude into it, expand it and make it, you know, really something where we could do something even the night before with music and make it a big event, kind of a multi-day event.
Bigger and better, we'll get Cincinnati and Chicago and all those other folks.
I'll tell them about that, I'll tell them about that in a minute, Trey.
That's right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, you bet. Anything else?
No, but to elaborate on that, Jody Curry with Mercantile on Main's heading that, heading that effort up.
Exactly.
I don't know how many vendors or booths she's already got signed up, but that's going to be the first weekend in June downtown LaGrange, it's going to begin on Friday night. We're going to try to begin it a day earlier, so we might, could hold some people in town overnight for our tourism ideas, tourism efforts, so we're going to try and make a weekend of it, so it should be good.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a good time, yeah. So it's kind of expanding on that, making it a multi-day event, so people stay, do something with them on Friday night, the event on Saturday, and then maybe, even talked about bringing it in into part, part of Sunday as well.
Okay.
And some different artists from the area.
Sounds exciting.
And outside of town, yeah.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item nine, everyone, is our LaGrange Utilities Report. We have Ted Chisholm here tonight, Roy Horton, who's chairman of our utility commission. Ted, would you like to come up and talk about your report at all? You have a few things listed here, audit approval, I-71 South Pump Station, Wolf Lake Subdivision, I guess that's just things that the commission's talking about and discussing at their meeting. We have a financial report before you, any questions or questions from the city council or Mayor Carter, do you have any elaboration on this report or anything from the utility commission as of tonight?
I assume that our depreciation schedule did come in with our audit report, correct? Excellent. And can you tell me if the figure on here is the interest-bearing account, the 131? We discussed this sort of at the meeting last time, but we haven't met since then.
On, on our wastewater account since our last meeting, I've done some re-switching around of money, I've put, I've opened up two new CDs and put one account in IEC that's actually in a money market and everything, so that, y'all is in this wastewater account. I'm looking into the water account now, doing some more arranging and change, switching some money for different accounts on the water account to bring in more interest to the utility organization.
Good, that's great.
Any more questions that anybody might have, or anything I can answer tonight, I'd be glad to try.
It's on a very solid footing, I think, with you at the head.
This time, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ted, thank you so much. Coming up, okay, under item 10, 11, and 12 tonight, everyone, we have some reappointments that have actually expired, they were, they were appointments made to the Historic District Commission by folks who either resigned, retired, or left the commission in approximately August of 19. We have Dottie Hetty who replaced Barbara, Barbara Eds, Barbara Manley Eds, or I think that's the correct pronunciation. She, her term ran, I think expired August of 19, 2019. She was replaced by Dottie Hetty, so her term would be from August of 219 to August of 221 for a two-year term. I'd like to reappoint Julie Eds Heckman as well. Her expiration date would be from, to August of 221, would have began on 2019 of August. And the reappointment of Kitty Beerbaum, she took the place of Brooke Veneman, and hers was to begin on August of 19 and also expire on August of 21. If no one has a problem with any one of those, I will take them all as your consideration to, for reapprovals and reappointments, so it'll be three of them unless somebody would wish to separate them out individually.
I love them two years, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Two years.
They all run to August of 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Joe? Mayor Davenport, former Mayor Davenport has given the approval to, as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elsie Carter, any, any discussion on the motion before the council? If not, if I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, also, we have a appointment tonight for Matt Lippi. He's, he's, he filled out the place of, I can't recall who he was filling the vacancy of, Matt Lippi, someone resigned, and he would basically sit on the LaGrange Park Board for another four years.
Motion to rip on Matt Lippi to Park Board.
Okay, motion made by Joe Davenport. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by Trey Kammer, any further discussion on Matt Lippi? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 14, introduction, first reading ordinance 15-219, amendment, amended ordinance to parking regulations, chapter 72. Is there a council person who'd wish to introduce that ordinance tonight?
I'll introduce the, for the first reading ordinance 15, 2019, an amendment, amended ordinance to parking regulations, chapter 72.
Okay, thank you, Trey. Any further discussion on that at this time? No? No, I'm not looking for a second, I'm just looking for just the introducing of it. Would you like to get it on the table? And then Beach is gonna, I'd like for him to read the ordinance itself and add any, any discussions to it that he wished to do.
Yes, I'd, so we, this went to committee this past month, we did have some discussions, and, and as Beach will elaborate on, this was about for-sale vehicles in the city of LaGrange, your personal vehicle not starting a, a car business at your property. But we, we had some discussion about that this past month, and I will turn it over to Beach as far as the, the description of the ordinance.
Go ahead, Beach.
Well, at this point, I'll do a reading, formal reading of it. Actually, it's so short, it won't even be in summary, it will be in full, but we've, there was some ambiguity in between, in the last ordinance that was on the books in terms of parking of vehicles with the for-sale sign, and so, what we've done is we've said that the, it shall be unlawful to park a motor vehicle displayed for sale on any street, except that a motor vehicle may be parked off the street upon the property where the vehicle owner resides for up to seven days, and they can, no more than two vehicles during any 12-month period. That's the reading of the ordinance, first reading. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
City council having questions on this at this time, as far as explanation of what the intent is, or was, or?
It seems to me that it is to keep a car from being on the street, being for sale forever, but you...
On the street whatsoever. I mean, you can't just put a car on the street, it's too much of a distraction, but if you wanna put it in your driveway or put it in your yard for a limited time, that's the, that's what they were trying to get to.
So, you're actually allowing somebody to do something that they're not allowed to do now, which is a plus?
Currently, we're going the other way, to let people do stuff.
It's a plus, if you consider it a plus, you know, which, that's fine, that's fine, that's a plus, but what the, what, what the question concern was, and Stephanie Winter is welcome to come up and add to this, but the way the ordinance was written, under its guidelines, you could not set your car in your own driveway and put for-sale sign on it legally, and that's the way it was.
Correct.
Now, what this also that will not allow is cars, will won't allow cars be parked in commercial establishments yet, even yet, for sale, in a commercial establishment. This says you have to reside at the place that the car's being sold, so I want the council to fully understand that.
And the reason, the reason that it wasn't addressed for commercial purposes was that you can't sell cars on a commercial basis without a dealer license. If you just, if you have a business and somebody comes up and puts a car on your property even without your permission, Kentucky Motor Vehicle Commission will come down and tell you to stop. So, you have to have a dealer license to sell cars anyway, so we're not trying to over, we're not trying to regulate something that's already regulated by state law.
I'm just wanting to make sure everyone understands, but it also will not allow any, any service station, any place, which Beach just talked about, to sit on, a car or truck sitting on their place of business for sale. It will not allow that under its current, current wording.
But if your car is for sale, you're taking to a business that works on cars, they would be allowed to have that car on their property until they fix it, or not?
Well, there's a second level of scrutiny here, which is the planning and zonings. They has to be zoned appropriately. You can, you can be zoned for a junkyard and not be allowed to sell cars, or you can be zoned for vehicle maintenance, but not be zoned for vehicle sales. So, it's a zoning issue, it's also a Kentucky licensing issue.
But if you take your car actually to have it fixed, you're not actually having it on that lot to be sold, so it would be allowed to be there until it's fixed, is this correct?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, are you saying, can it be sitting outside on that lot with a for-sale sign on it?
No, it's just they bring it in, they sell it on it to have it fixed, because they can't sell it till it's fixed, and then they take it off, and as soon as it's fixed, then they take it back home again.
Yes.
They're not leaving it there on display to be sold, they're leaving there only because they're waiting to have it fixed.
Yeah, it has to be, the prohibited action would be the display for sale.
Right, okay.
Like the famous for-sale by owner sign.
Stephanie Winter?
Now, if you're driving around right now with a for-sale sign in your car window, and you stop at Kroger to get groceries, or you go to Dairy Queen and you get something to drink, you're not technically in violation of the ordinance, but if you park your car at Dairy Queen for a week, that's what we're looking for.
This might be a stupid question. This may be a stupid question, but how does this relate to new federal regulations that you can't regulate anything, language content on a sign?
It's not regulating the sign, it's regulating the cars that are for sale.
Right, but it's still addressing like what's on the sign.
I mean, that is true.
Because it kinda, it's regulating what's on the sign, because you're saying you can't have for sale on the sign.
But we don't, we don't disallow these types of signs in your personal yard anyway, so we allow you to have signs in your personal yard.
Just under this, it would be more than seven days, though. Like, under the new ordinance, how it's being written, it states that you're allowed to park it on your property with that, with that sign in there for no more than seven days, so that's regulating it.
So, do you take it out for one day and then go back again, or what do you do?
Well, I mean, if we wanna be technical, I guess we can't do this at all, but if we can't put a sign there, I mean, you'd have to take...
Since we're counting...
This whole thing you're talking about, this First Amendment...
The way I read, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Mayor Lamline, go ahead, Beach.
Well, this whole thing you're talking about, about, Mary, about the First Amendment stuff is probably gonna play itself out in the courts, okay, somewhere, because just, you know, in, in the next ordinance, we're about ready to read the amendment of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, the, the, the Planning Commission and has been strongly researched and concluded that they can't regulate the content of signs anymore. But in this case, the, the offender, alleged offender, would not have applied for a permit for this in the first place, so there's this inherent First Amendment right to say whatever you want, but if you studied this stuff, you can't, First Amendment has certain limits, you can't cry fire in a, in a crowded theater, you know, so the reason that, that there's no, for-sale signs supposed to be allowed for cars that are just parked on the street is that it will distract people from driving, and they'll say, "Oh, that's a good car," and they'll swerve over or something dangerous.
Right.
So, that's the reason for this. I don't, I don't know that the First Amendment, the zoning rules would apply to the traffic rules. These are, these are actually criminal offenses, semi-criminal offenses, as opposed to zoning, which is all the best street.
No, I agree with the, if it's on the street, I mean, like, for this, it's actually starting to stipulate when it's parked on your private property.
Right.
And then at that point, it's the sign that you have on your private property, and how does that, that is going against the new amendment, regulating the content.
It's like the be kind signs.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor Lamline?
Beach covered what I wanted to say, thank you.
Well, anyway, between now and a month from now, Mr. Craig-Mile, you can research that if you'd like to further, but we will have a public hearing on this amendment to this ordinance on, in our January meeting. Okay.
I'll make one more comment related to this, quickly. So, part of the reason why the, as far as the day stipulation was brought up was to, not that you couldn't take your, couldn't keep your sign there, it was to, essentially, if you parked your car in your yard, and it's sat there for seven days, and it's the summertime, that you would move your vehicle and cut your grass, essentially. So, that's kind of where the, the stipulation of the sitting in the same spot for a period of time.
Yeah, but, this says seven days, two times a year.
Right.
So, Mary says, under the First Amendment, you can leave it, you can back it up, mow your grass, and pull it back up, and set it there for another seven days.
And you've moved your vehicle at that point.
See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
See what she's saying?
Right.
So...
But the ordinance is not saying that, it says you cannot do that?
Yeah, but under the First Amendment, free speech, if they can do it 365 days a year, and the Supreme Court says you can, then how can we say they can't?
And what have they said so far?
Well, that's, that's, Beach is gonna argue that before the Court of Appeals next month.
All right, yeah, that, the, the free speech came down for, largely for zoning regulation purposes. This is not a zoning regulation purposes. That had to do with offensive or intentionally misleading signs that were false, but you have a right to lie, you know, but, so there's a, there's a lot of that going, being scrutinized right now, so I don't think we've seen the end of it in the court system.
Okay, let's move on to, we have a second reading tonight in a public hearing, second round of public hearing, the ordinance 14-219, ordinance adopting revisions and updates for certain sections of the existing Oldham Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. We have Jim Urban, who's not here, but we have Amy Alvey and Tom McIntyre from our Oldham County Planning and Development Department, so that's, that is the, the name and identification of the ordinance, so at this time, who would like to make the motion to approve this ordinance? That's what this council's done, or customarily, to make a motion, a second?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion.
To approve or to introduce it?
They make a motion to approve.
It's already been introduced, it was introduced at the first reading. I make a motion to accept this ordinance number 14, series 2019, which is a adoption of the revised updates in the certain sections of the existing Oldham County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Lamline, second by Leslie Wright. You have a motion of second. Now, I'd like to have a motion to go into a public hearing.
So, move.
Motion made by Leslie Wright, is there a second? By Andrea?
Yeah.
Andrea Essam Price seconds it. All those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Good. Now, that being said, Beach, you need to say anything further before Amy begins?
Well, I, I think I need to just formally do a reading and summary for the second reading, and then you can have your discussion. Under a summary reading, you, you read the exact title of the article of the, of the ordinance, so this is the City LaGrange Ordinance Number 14, series 2019, which is an ordinance adopting revisions and updates for certain sections of the existing Oldham County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. That's the official title. Summary of it, I will largely defer to Amy Alvey to describe, but it is an extensive amendment to the comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission takes, deserves extreme credit for the amount of work that they've put into this. We've previously passed out the executive summaries to the changes, and, and attached to this second reading are all the explicit and specific changes, verbatim, with the required legislative editing of the strike-throughs for deletions and underlines for new text, amendments to sections 330, 360, 370, 420, 270, 300, introduction of various new zoning districts, AG1, concepts and terms such as agritourism, barrel warehouses, brew pubs, all sorts of new terms to bring our county up to the 21st century. So, that's the reading and summary.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Craig-Mile. So, at this time, Ms. Alvey, the floor is yours.
Sure. Amy Alvey, I'm the Assistant Director for Oldham County Planning and Development Services. Tom McIntyre is our senior planner, we're both here tonight. It's really the purview of the council, I can go over each section, or I can go over specific questions or specific areas that you would like, so it's really the purview of the council of what you want to do.
Well, I would hit the, certainly the highlights that affect our city in any shape, form, or fashion, and something that, just blaring, that we should pick up on and, and make sure we understand that it's in this document here tonight.
Okay, so the first sections, 330, 360, 370, those are all mainly grammatical changes. There were some removal of some language that none of us understood what, what the intent of it was, so those are mainly just grammatical. Division 420, that's the adoption of a, of the Planner's Dictionary that's published by the American Planning Association. That, we officially adopted that, so if we are in a hearing and need to use it as a cross-reference for some type of language that is either in a binding element or something of that nature, we can relate and look up that definition to see what it is associated with officially, rather than using it not, by it not being officially adopted.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Page 171, is that 330-040, old site triangle?
Huh?
I'm not gonna debate it tonight, however, but...
Thank you.
Right here it says, "Should be no obstruction of traffic visible within 35 feet of the intersection." I've, I've been told, is this a change? Because I've been told it's 50 feet.
No, that is, you are under, I don't have it by page number, what section is that under, John?
It's under section 330-040, site triangle.
That is for permanent structures, such as a house.
Oh.
Correct, that's not related to signs.
Okay, okay.
That's not related to signs.
So, what's that say about a house, then? You can't put it within 35 feet of an intersection or something?
Correct, because if it's a corner lot, they basically have to observe both front-yard setbacks on there.
Okay.
Which in turn makes a site triangle.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right.
Okay, so then we talked about the Division 420, there's a lot of definitions that are added in there under that section. Each one of those definitions, either that were removed or added, are specifically listed under the following subsections, such as residential care facilities, agritourism buildings, lighting regulations, distilleries, breweries, and barrel warehouses. One other item that is specific to the city is under capacity standards 270-080, that was recently, well, in 2012, the USPS adopted standards for cluster mailboxes, so you'll see any new developments within, within Oldham County and within the state of Kentucky as well, that they will not do delivery at individual driveways, they will be cluster systems like you would see at like an apartment complex or a condominium complex. So... So, USPS has decided to enforce the regulations finally that they imposed back in 2012. So, we added language as part of our capacity standards when we review and approve subdivisions. And this is basically to show that we are recognizing their standards for centralized mailbox systems. And they are also trying to implement this on future sections. So, if you have a subdivision that has eight sections and four sections have been built, the new four sections, the future four sections, will have to go to this type of mail delivery as well. So, you will no longer see mailboxes at individual driveways. They'll have a cluster system. And then they'll have to have some type of identification marker if they're set back off the road far enough for emergency services, so they'll be able to identify the homes.
So, you're saying if you have a subdivision right now, you've got two sections built in it already, and you're going to maybe come to y'all and ask for Section 3 and 4?
When it goes to Record Plaid, it's already approved.
Oh.
When it comes into our office to go to Record Plaid, they have to get agency letters from water, sewer, electric, fire department. They also have to get an approval letter from USPS. And USPS will decide at that time if they're still going to do the standardized mailbox delivery, or they'll require them to put in a cluster system.
What about on a brand-new subdivision coming to you, it's got 200 homes, and then how's it going to be handled?
It'll be designed with all cluster systems.
So, everyone's mailbox will be at the front entrance of the subdivision?
It doesn't necessarily have to be at the front entrance, they'll, they'll do them by sections, because it would be a large unit. It won't be like Norton Commons, Norton Commons actually has, it's not a, it's not a post office, but it looks like a post office, but they can't call it a post office, but it's a big building. And basically, you have the same thing, is you have a key and you get your mail, there's a place to pull off Cherry...
Glen?
Glen will have cluster mailboxes.
They will? So, they'll be located somewhere in the subdivision? Different places or all one place, or what'd you say about that?
That's determined by USPS.
Okay.
Not, not by planning staff. So, they'll have to establish where it's a safe area for them to pull off, they'll have to have a pull-off area for them to pull off and get out and get their mail.
So, an older person living in a home in Cherry Glen would have to walk to the subdivision to get their mail, correct? Walk through the subdivision?
Or they pull up and stop and get their mail out, and then get back in their car and go. Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Landscape regulations, that was just basically adding a portion in there regarding institutional uses. We didn't have anything that required institutional uses such as government buildings, hospitals, churches, things of that nature, to require them to conform with the landscape regulations. So, we included that in the regulations with this update. Residential care facilities, that was basically updating the language to meet the current KRS 100 of what the definition of community residents and developmentally disabled individuals. These were our regulations that we had in place. And in researching something, another topic, I found in KRS 1984 that the state already had a definition, and that they are, residential care facilities are allowed any place that a regular, single-family or multifamily home is allowed. Previously, we required them to get a conditional use permit, but KRS 1984 allows them to be anywhere that a residential, that, any facility in any residential district, zone, or subdivision. So, anywhere you could put a standard house, you can put a residential care facility. These would be similar to Cedar Lake homes. So, that's basically removing our old definitions, adding in the new definitions that are defined by the state. Sign regulations, this is probably one of the bigger ones that has effect, that will have effect on LaGrange as well as the rest of the county. This is what Beach was speaking of, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, that went to the US District Court, and they won. Basically, it was saying that you cannot regulate a sign based off the content. That's the quick and simple version of it. You can regulate a sign basically off of the location, so the setback of it, the type of sign, and the height of the sign. So, now when people come into our office and they apply for a sign permit, we just ask them, we have to have a site plan to show where it's going to go, the type of sign, and the area of the sign. We don't ask them what the content of it is. Previously, you would have to apply for a conditional use permit for an off-premise sign. So, if you owned a business on First Street and you wanted to advertise it on Sixth Street, you would have to apply for a conditional use permit for that sign to be off-premise. So, again, if you have to read it to regulate it, they are saying it's against the First Amendment.
He also extended the 300 feet away from an expressway.
We haven't got that part yet. This is, I'm just going over the content part of it, but we will, we will get there on there as well. So, basically, we went through and took any of the regulations out that prohibited a sign based off the content. So, if you have, again, if you have to read it to regulate it, we had to take that part out. So, we removed sign, these sign definitions such as off-premise, nameplate, private sale, real estate, memorial, home occupation sign, because again, those are types of signs, if you have to read it to regulate it, you cannot. No changes were made in any of the sign regulations regarding the sign allowances. The City of LaGrange has their own set of parameters for signs, so none of those were changed. We'll get to that in a second. The only change that was made regarding signs is that previously, you get 30, you were allowed 30% for electronic signs. We increased that to 50%, but you still cannot exceed 24 square feet. Previously, it was 20, industry standard is 24 square feet. They, every sign company that I've talked to said, "We don't make a 20-square-foot sign, we make a 24-square-foot sign." So, it was more to fit the industry standard on there. Scenes along scenic corridors, no freestanding signs, banners, or wall signs to be located within 300 feet of the center of the nearest travel lane of Interstate 71. Previously, it did not say wall signs, it was just freestanding signs or banners. Let's see, I thought I had a graphic in there, did I not have a graphic? Yes, I know. So, basically, that is saying that if you have a building that, or property that backs up to the interstate, the building cannot have a sign on it advertising that business unless it is within, it has to be further than 300 feet from the center of the nearest travel lane. And that was a change that was initiated by fiscal court.
What is it now?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it allows wall signs.
Any distance from the interstate?
Yes.
Now, you're moving it back 300 feet from the middle of the, of the nearest travel lane?
Yes, to match the freestanding and banners. Walls, the wall portion, wall signs was added to the regulation. So, signs will be regulated by size, type, location, and height. All sign allowances and setbacks remain the same except as previously discussed. So, again, there wasn't any change to the existing sign regulations for the city. Agritourism buildings, we kind of call these party barns, people that have repurposed an existing agricultural structure. We don't have too many of those within the city limits of LaGrange, so I'll be kind of brief on that. Basically, House Bill 360 was passed by legislation, and they identified and defined what is agritourism and an agritourism activity, as well as these other definitions listed. Basically says that they have to get a conditional use permit, and it's based off of the size of the building, whether it has to be sprinkled or not, meaning building code. So, agritourism, you have to have five acres, they have to be at least 30, the structure has to be at least 30 feet from all property lines. You have to show you have adequate parking. And the building code requirements for occupancy load calculations and fire suppressions are all outlined by House Bill 360. Lighting regulations, right now in Oldham County, we don't have any lighting regulations. So, we implemented lighting regulations, and we have a three-tiered review process in the planning office based off your traffic impact on the, on your surrounding road network. So, the lighting standards is basically based off of that, it's category 1, category 2, and category 3. So, this is a pretty general overview of what is required. If it's category 1, which means that you have less than 20 peak hour trips, you have to submit a lighting plan. If it's category 2 or category 3, excuse me, you have to submit a photometric plan, which has to be done by a lighting specialist, which basically shows the foot candles at the property lines. So, all category 2 and 3 development plans, non-residential uses, abutting a residential or agricultural use or multifamily plans, they have to submit a photometric plan stamped by a licensed engineer or architect. So, this is just making sure that we have, if someone has a more intense use next to less intensity, that they're not having any light spill over or light pollution onto their neighbors. AG2, this is a brand-new zoning classification, there are no properties in Oldham County zoned AG2. The intent of this is for the agricultural business district, this is try to promote barrel warehouses and distilleries to come to Oldham County. This was the best way for us to have legislative overview of the approval process of that was to create a new zoning district. So, this is to provide for agricultural development to allow the means of earning supplemental income that can preserve and sustain local farms and contribute to the economic base in rural areas of Oldham County. Again, this is a new zoning district, so anybody that wanted to rezone their property to AG2 would come before any of the cities or fiscal court for that approval. The only difference between AG2 and AG1 is the agricultural business portion of it, which would allow distilleries, craft distilleries, breweries, microbreweries, barrel warehouses, and farm implement repair as a permitted use. Everything else is the same as AG1, which we have a lot of property in Oldham County already zoned AG1 agricultural. So, by rezoning the property to AG2, the only benefit by doing that would be if you were wanting to do one of the items listed there in blue. The other change is, is that the minimum lot size is also five acres, where in AG1 it is one acre. Distilleries, breweries, and barrel warehouses, the only place that you can have a distillery or brewery by right is in the industrial zone properties and in AG2, again, which requires a zoning change. So, these are all the definitions that were researched for relating to distilleries and barrel warehouses. Yes, or Mayor?
Back up there just a moment, you just said, there's two places that's permitted, what were the two categories?
AG2 and industrial.
You and I talked the other day about Commerce Parkway Zone, I think IPD, and we concluded, or you concluded, that they could have them there too, correct?
If, unless there are specific deed restrictions, and if, most industrial park districts have specific deed restrictions that say you can't have vehicle sales, or you can't have automotive body shop or something of that nature. As long as it's not listed as a deed restriction, then it could be done. Another one would be if it's a PUD, which is at the end of Commerce Parkway, Plan Unit Development, unless it specifically states that they are not allowed, then they would be allowed in those as well.
That would be in some covenant of restrictions, is that what you're saying?
Correct, uh-huh, yes. So, these are the definitions related to distilleries and barrel warehouses. So, again, you have all of these listed, a lot of these come from state, straight from the state of Kentucky. KDA, Kentucky Distillers Association. What is considered a microbrewery, again, is, you know, if they manufacture 50,000 barrels or less, things of that nature. So, in AG2, if someone wanted to rezone their property to AG2 for a distillery, they have to have at least 25% of the property has to be dedicated to agricultural use. Max building height is 60 feet. The big issue or on this is that all of the structures, except for agricultural use, have to be 500 feet from any property line. So, anything that is related to the distillery, brewery, craft distillery, or microbrewery, they have to have a 500-foot setback. So, number 4 says, "No owner or operator shall construct or operate a facility with noxious emissions unless it's equipped and utilizes best available control technology," which is BACT, that's regulated by Kentucky Division of Air Quality. So, right now, there are no regulations when it comes to distilleries, but we put this language in there. They are in the process of writing regulations for the emissions known as the black fungus, the black mold that you see a lot from distilleries and barrel warehouses. So, in the event the state does have come down with some type of regulations regarding those emissions, we have it in there that they will have to comply with whatever the best available control technology is at the time that they apply for their building permit. Facility tours, visitor centers, food service operations, and restaurants, the sale of products produced on-site are all permitted. They're allowed to have festivals, they are required to have a development plan, a traffic impact study, landscape and lighting plans as well. All structures in I-1 and I-2 is basically the same thing, except they have a 100-foot setback, except if they abut a residential use, doesn't have to be zoning. So, the property could be zoned AG1, but it's used for residential purposes, the setback goes up to 200 feet. So, all of these items are listed in that, the same as previously. In AG2, regarding barrel warehouses, this is what fiscal court approved, and then they came back a few days later and said they wanted to change it. Previously, we allowed barrel warehouses as a conditional use permit, so they would go before the appropriate Board of Adjustments and ask for permission. And fiscal court came back and said they did not want that to happen. So, the only places that you can have a barrel warehouse, it would be located in AG2, which again, takes a zoning change, or in the industrial districts. And they wanted to limit the size of the barrel warehouses. So, barrel warehouses shall only be permitted when associated with a distillery operation located on the same tract of land, which is open for tours a minimum of four days per week with one day being a weekend. The maximum size of the barrel warehouse cannot exceed the following, so it's barrels per warehouse equals annual production for, times five years. So, that allows them to rotate their products out. And then the same thing, 25% of the land has to be used for agricultural use, they have to have the best available control technologies in place, maximum height is 60 feet, and again, all structures have to be 500 feet from all property lines. The key with number 1, where it says the same tract of land, which is open for tours a minimum of four days per week with one day being a weekend, is that is the requirement to be on the bourbon tour. So, in I-1 and I-2, the following provisions are for barrel warehouses. They're basically the same as the previous one, except you're not required to have a distillery on-site. And all structures have to have a front, rear, and side yard setback of 250 feet. And when it is adjacent to a residential use, it is 500 feet. So, it pushes it back further away to keep any of the possible black fungus from getting on adjoining properties. Brew pubs, this will be kind of important to the City of LaGrange. At minimum, a 50% of the beer or malt beverage made on premise must be sold or consumed on-site. They are allowed in C-1, C-2, C-3, C-4, I-1, and IPD. This is any place that also allows a restaurant, so any place that is currently zoned appropriately for a restaurant, someone could put in a brew pub. So, again, they, that, that way, they can brew it on-site, they just have to sell 50% of the beer or malt beverage on-site. Parking requirements are the same as a restaurant. So, we treated brew pubs similar to those of a restaurant, except for the 50% consumption portion.
Would that apply to CN also?
No.
Okay. You can have restaurants there, right?
You can't have, you can have restaurants without drive-throughs, I believe. But with CN, that integrates into the residential portion of it, so they didn't want to have the residential, have a house next door to a brew pub. Has to be in the commercial zoning. So, this is an example of barrel warehouses. So, this is in AG2. So, an example is if you wanted to have one barrel warehouse, which the typical barrel warehouse is 100 feet by 200 feet, you would have to have at minimum 30.3 acres to have one barrel warehouse. To have two barrel warehouses, assuming that they are sprinkled, there's a 100-foot setback. If they are sprinkled, 200 feet, if they're not, you have to have 37.9. An example of three barrel warehouses, you'd have to have 45.5 acres. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of what size properties it would take to do that. In I-1 or I-2, you would have to have approximately 9.6 acres to have one barrel warehouse. And in I-1 or I-2, to have two barrel ware, or to have a barrel warehouse and abuts residential, you'd have to have approximately 13.6 acres. So, this is just kind of a summary of where distilleries and breweries, craft distilleries, barrel warehouses, and brew pubs are allowed, what their setbacks are, things of that nature. barrel warehouses, and brew pubs are allowed, what their setbacks are, things of that nature. So, um, Jim Urban, my boss, is at Peewee tonight doing the second reading. Uh, Crestwood did their second reading and approval today. So this has been adopted by fiscal court and the city of Crestwood, most likely the city of Peewee. And so the city of LaGrange is the last, um, as of right now. So if this is approved, what we will do, we will incorporate this all into a new document. And then I will get that out to everyone. So you have an updated zoning book.
Okay. Um, thank you, Amy. Um, very good presentation. Tom McIntyre, who's with you tonight, would he like to say anything to the council tonight? Okay. Stephanie Winter, since a lot of this regulation, uh, language applies to things you deal with daily on regulations of different things within our city, any, any concerns you have with what's been presented? No? Okay. Okay, thank you, Amy. So at this time, I would like to go ahead and, in our public comment or in our public hearing time, is there anyone here tonight who would like to come forward and support the suggestion that planning and development agent has made to the city council tonight? If you support this idea, please come forward and let it be known. If not, anyone here tonight who opposes this idea and would like to let it be known, you're welcome to come forward and tell the council about your opposition. So no one? Okay. Uh, do you have a closing statement, Ms. Alvey, on why we should pass this? Okay. All right. No closing remarks?
Mayor, I'd like to move. We go out of public hearing.
A motion made by Bill Lambline, second by Joe Davenport. All those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table, uh, for approval. It's in the council's hands right now to be discussed. Any questions, concerns, or anything amongst the council you'd like to bring, bring up at this time?
Um, I would just like to ask, while I have people in the room who could answer these questions. Um, I've recently gotten some questions from people about the be kind signs in their yards. And a few people have been asked by homeowners associations to remove the signs. Is there something on a city level that we have any kind of enforcement in terms of that? Or, or is that, uh, purely on the homeowners association? Is there any language here that I need to know?
They have deed, specific deed restrictions that say that they cannot have them in their homeowners, you know, in their neighborhood. That's an issue that they'll have to take up with them. The county or city can enforce deed restrictions. Our regulations allow two, two-foot by three-foot, which is the typical, we call them snipe signs, um, are allowed by right. They just need to make sure they keep it out of the road right of way. So typically, the road right of way is 15 foot from the center of the road. Um, or 15 foot, I'm sorry, from the edge of pavement. So that, that kind of gives them, uh, an idea of where to place it. Not put it right next to the edge of pavement, set it back some. But if they have specific deed restrictions that say that they cannot have signs in their yards, then they'll have to take that up with their homeowners association, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Hey, uh, Mr. Kamers, you have something that you want to bring up?
I did, I, yeah, I had a question. So it's, um, it's on the lighting regulation, the 310. Is, is all of that new or?
Everything is new. There are no lighting standards at this point. So everything is new.
Um.
They propose, they started working on a draft back in 2005, but they never moved forward, forward with it. So we took what they had started as a draft and modified it from there.
Okay. Um, as far as, you could drive through town tonight and see them. If somebody just had a light bulb only, and I'm just kind of reading the, um, the fully shielded fixtures. So is it saying that the light bulb is not an option to, if it's not shielded? Or maybe I'm not?
For new, for commercial lighting?
Um. I think if it's, I'm more asking for residential, um, like driving through town, you could see the blue light bulb or the green light bulb, and they signify various things.
Okay, which section with the tray? I'm sorry, 310?
Um, so 310 gives a, and I appreciate the pictures here, um, showing acceptable uses of a, I guess, of a, a fully shielded fixture.
Uh-huh.
Um, I felt like I read something in here that was talking about it applies to residential too.
That's intended for commercial purposes on it. Um, it can't, obviously, if it's one that's, uh, butting a road right of way or something of that nature, it can't be, it causes glare, you know, into the eyes of the driver, things of that nature. Because the lighting plan, we, you know, we don't require lighting plans on single-family homes or landscape plans on single-family homes, so.
So I, I guess in general, so if, if I had floodlights on my garage, so that's not a fully, I mean, I guess one of these diagrams does, you could have a part of a fully shielded fixture. Um, but if I just had just a plain old floodlight, uh, can have that still?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I don't recall it specifically calling that out in there for residential purposes.
Okay.
What Trey's suggesting, if he had a floodlight shining in his neighbor's bedroom window, couldn't he get charged with, with something, you know, that, that this ordinance says he could? You know, so how's, how much does it apply to residential living?
Says all public and private outdoor lighting shall meet the following standards. Lighting fixtures, except as otherwise permitted here, and are required to be fully shielded. Fully shielded lighting fixtures results in a light distribution pattern where no light is permitted at or above a horizontal plane at the bottom of the fixture. That's 310040, item number one. So that's all public and private outdoor lighting. So that's basically saying you shouldn't have a floodlight that lights up your neighbor's living room. So if we were to get a complaint about that, we would send them a kind courtesy letter and tell them that we received a complaint. And this is the section that talks about the lighting and that they should shield the, the light. So it won't be, become a nuisance to the adjoining property owners.
Would you send them a letter, or would Stephanie Winter send them a letter?
We would. If they're in the city limits of LaGrange, you guys would. But if it's outside the city limits of LaGrange, so we do code enforcement for everyone except the city of LaGrange.
Any further questions, or Trey's still looking at the document?
I mean, personally, I would hope that my neighbor would not have their floodlight shining in my living room. Um, but, you know, um, I guess as far as the light bulbs that I see around town that, uh, on residential properties that are just a light bulb. Um, and that one, I know one part in here talks about the lumens that it puts out and stuff like that. Um, I don't know how you test the, how you test that. Uh, I'm just not educated on that part.
We would have to hire a lighting, we, if we have something that is in dispute of what the regulations is, then we have to hire a lighting expert, because we, it's not a micrometer, I can't think of the name. There's a tool that actually measures the numbers of lumens if it's not listed specifically on the bulb, or if there's a dispute about foot candles on a commercial property. The intent of it is mainly for a commercial property, not for a residential.
Yeah.
I hope everybody will be a good neighbor, but we all have that one.
Hope so. Yeah. Okay.
It's, Trey, it's, it's just called a light meter, okay? They just, you just measure the number of lumens. What's the, what's the trust, what's the threshold for a trespass?
Depends on what the adjoining property is.
Okay, how about residential?
If it's one, say, one foot candle.
One foot candle. That's amount of light that one candle will produce, the amount of energy it'll produce on one square foot away, a foot away from it. That's not a lot.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about most of the properties in LaGrange, residential properties. It's kind of tight on, uh, how they're put together, I guess. Uh, new, new developments and, you know, our, our older parts of the city, so.
It's hard to regulate what individual people do on their private property. We're looking more at the commercial side of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If no further comments or questions, we have a motion, a second on the table for the adoption of ordinance 14-219. All those in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Amy. Thanks for coming. Tom, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your all's work and see you, see you next time. All right, thank you all. Okay, 16, item 16, anyone, any person or committee, uh, person from any committee like to bring anything to the council at this time on anything you're working on? Or discussing?
I might mention, uh, the Road Public Safety Police and Environmental Committee meeting we had November 21st. One of the items I'd like to bring forth that, uh, that we discussed, um, I know last month we passed a resolution for the city taking 1,003 feet of Jericho Road. And my understanding is the state will not allow that to be divided. They want us to go further down to where 1724 crosses over?
712.
Uh, 712?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, that would be going from 1,003 feet that we were taking to, uh, like 3,700 feet.
Right.
So, uh, the committee, uh, decided not to approve that in our road committee. Uh, you know, you're talking about probably maintenance on that for asphalt or something, you're probably talking $60,000 if it has to be redone. So we were just talking about as much as we got in the city to do. And with asphalt, that we did need to take that on at this time. So the road committee, uh, was not going to recommend it to the city council. Andrea, you got anything you want to add to it, or you were at the meeting?
Yes.
It's really still in the city, actually.
Right. It is.
I think it was in the city we should take care of it and control it.
Repeat what you said, Ms. Carter.
Yes, I can.
Repeat what you just said, please.
I said that it was, that it was all in the city of LaGrange. And I think really that we should control that by accepting it into the city, because that goes all the way down to Duncan, which is, um, or almost to Duncan, which is also in the city there. And I really believe that we could take care of that. I think our finances show that we would be able to be responsible for it. Uh, I think it might be in the future the smartest thing we could do.
Well, right now, well, you've got a committee recommending we don't take care of it. The state, the state, the state at this time has taken a position that they're, they're not willing to just give 1,003 feet of it away. They need a defined breaking point, and that breaking point would be at Highway 712, which is the Lesko roadway in front of Lesko. That's where it would be. And as Joe mentioned, um, the cost of repaving that section, not including ditching and water retention, and you name it. The pavement only, Corey's estimated to be about 65,000 just to do that portion. So, but, but we, we, we did petition the state with your all's approval to do that. But at this time, they've decided that's not a great place to break their highway at, is where at the 1,003-foot mark. So.
I would agree with them, because I think that we're responsible anyway for that subdivision over there and their drainage on that side. And there's been problems down there at the end, at Duncan, before. And, um, I think we really are, they pay taxes, we should take care of them. It's just my opinion.
Um, whether it's state or city, they should be taken care of. I don't care which, which person maintains the road. If it's a state highway and their people are getting water pushed on them, then we should take care of that as well. But that's just the way it's been for years, and that's the way it is as of right now. So we can continue to discuss that if you wish to. Andrea?
Thanks. I was on that committee at that meeting. And my understanding in the first place was that the whole intention of retaining that 1,003 feet of road was to put a crosswalk across, uh, for the Railroad Museum, because there was a resident at the meeting for the conditional use permit or the rezoning that said that they really wanted a crosswalk put in for public safety. And so we were going to take control of the road. As a result, in that meeting, I was told that we can put the crosswalk in that location whether or not we actually control the road. Um, so with that understanding and the recommendation of Corey, and, uh, that's why I believe we, we made that determination. It seemed like the, the best compromise there, since we could put that crosswalk there, which was the reason that we wanted to take over that, that piece of road anyway. Am I, am I recalling that correctly, Joe?
Um, I'll say this, and, um, you're, you're, you're right. However, if you think about this, and there's no stop sign, stop sign going east on Main Street, and you identify it as a crosswalk. Yes, CSX has recently put a stop sign up there to ask the cars to stop, stop going west. But I think the street committee all decided, also decided that night that there was no place to control traffic going east. Would that be correct? There's no place to put a stop sign to go east.
Correct.
So we, you'd have to be careful, probably even from the state highway permission standpoint, of making that a legalized crosswalk, and you're only stopping traffic going one way. So you could get yourself in a dangerous jam there by permitting that to be a defined crosswalk, but yet traffic not having to stop going east on Main, on the Jericho Road.
An intersection is not, you know, we all know what the intersection looks like. But even to get a stop sign there, when we looked at it, you're going to have to actually shift the road. Uh, even with that, if, if a stop sign, and we talked about the tractors and trailers that go through there, if it was to knock a stop sign over, if it did go over on a railroad track and nobody noticed it, or they didn't see it, then you got a stop sign on railroad track. So there was a number of things that was discussed that, that I just, I didn't think the, the, what the city would get out of it to, to take all that highway in was, was a way too much of a expense. And it was for, for what good it would do. I mean, we've got, we've got state, state highways running through the city of LaGrange everywhere. So, you know, why, why should we even consider that one for?
Okay. Okay. Um, if someone wants to bring it up differently, you're always welcome to, other than what we have tonight that's been decided by the state cabinet right at the moment. Um, I think another item was mentioned in that meeting was Keene Avenue.
Yes, I've got, I was going to bring it up. Keene Avenue has already got the, uh, speed humps and the stop signs on it. Um, it, it's working great, you know, uh, you have a few complaints, just like you do. You know, some people's going to complain, but I guess the, uh, one lady come before us, she's very happy about it. And it seems to work and, seems to be working okay. So then we discussed the signage for the cross, uh, golf cart crossings. Uh, uh, I think those are going to have to be put also on the state highway. Uh, that will have to be approved. Uh, I don't know if we can, uh, we were going to research that. But, um, my, my thought was it might be best, before we get into this too deep, is see how many golf carts we're going to have this summer, this spring, or whenever, when they come along. And then we might be able to address, you know, but still, we're going to have to reach out to the state for that. So. Uh, we discussed the, we discussed the courthouse renovation project, what it was going to do to Second Street. Uh, Second Street right now could, could use resurfacing. It's in bad shape. Second Street is in, in due repair. But we didn't want to discuss what we was going to do with Second Street until we found out what the, how the courthouse was going to use it, because they're going to have equipment going there and setting on the, on Second Street. Uh, they're going to have, uh, unloading and shifting around on the street. We don't want to, we don't want to resurface it now. So hopefully, if they're going to use that, and, uh, we talked about deciding then if we's going to be still leave it one way, if it's going to be closed while construction was going on, or what was going to happen to it, because. to it, because, uh, and hopefully maybe if they use it, then we can get some kind of agreement with them, when they get done, they can, they can put asphalt down on, because I'm sure it's going to be in worse shape than with, uh, stairs skitters or forklifts or whatever, back and forth of unloading the equipment, what it'll do to Second Street, so. I think that's about all we covered, Mayor, unless you've got anything?
All right, Bill, um, I will tell Mayor Lambline, he forwards me these folks who have called from Keene Avenue via email, I've, I've answered every one of them, and every one of them have been satisfied with my explanation, okay? I've just told them how we've got, come to where we are out there with the stop sign speed humps, and the one Scarborough from the other day, she was very well satisfied with my explanation where we are at the moment. Okay, thank you, Mayor, good report, anyone else on any, uh, standing committee at this time?
Sorry, economic development, uh, mostly we spent our hour talking about branding, about branding, rebranding or branding the city, uh, we also talked about some other issues that actually were cross, uh, committees, um, about, uh, taking property into the city annexation, but, um, we, we did talk about branding and that's probably way off in the future, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Trey?
Um, so to add to that, so the building budget financing utilities, um, committee met on, um, uh, eleven twenty, um, we had a good presentation by Ted as far as properties that are, um, outside of the city limits that are users of our, um, wastewater, uh, facility, um, so we did discuss those properties, uh, we are working on, um, trying to have a, um, a draft ordinance presented at the, um, LaGrange Utilities Commission meeting on the ninth, uh, and asking for a recommendation, and then we would also, um, have a first reading on our special meeting on the ninth, um, for that draft ordinance. That was that committee, uh, we will meet again on the eighteenth, December eighteenth at five o'clock, uh, same location at City Hall, and, um, then the personnel insurance boards and commissions committee met on November twenty-first, uh, we did discuss the, um, for sale, for lack of a better word, ordinance, uh, that we've already read for a first reading, uh, we do have several other items that, uh, we've had to table, but, um, plan on addressing on December nineteenth at five o'clock.
Uh, Mayor, uh, one thing that on December eighteenth at six o'clock, we will have our, our, uh, economic development meeting, and that'll be right after the buildings, uh, meeting.
All right, thank you, thank everyone for reporting on your different committees.
Can I just step up with one? I was, I was going to say, um, Tourism Commission is not technically a city, uh, committee, but I do attend those meetings, and, uh, just because it's kind of a new thing, I was just going to let you all know about, uh, how the last meeting went, um, they're doing a great job, um, right now, as of the first, um, two weeks with the tourism tax, uh, they had already collected about ten thousand dollars, uh, in two weeks from that three percent that we're getting, so, um, probably they are looking at hiring a executive director in the first quarter of next year, but right now I think the priority is working on bylaws, which Beach is helping with, and, uh, emission statement, and, um, trying to stockpile some of that, that tax money, so I think that is where they are right now, but it's a really great group, and they are meeting again on, uh, Tuesday, December seventeenth at five o'clock, and currently these meetings are all being held, um, in the meeting room, events room at Hometown Pizza, so Leslie came to the last meeting, so it was great to see her there, and, uh, anyone who wants to kind of see what's going on, we would love that. Thanks.
Andrea, are you, are you attending most of those meetings or going to try to?
Yes, I'm attending all of those meetings.
Yeah, Mayor, I think would be appropriate that Andrea actually, if she, if she's, she's there and she has something to tell us, that she does give us a report, uh, at this portion of our meeting, if she's willing to do that.
I am happy to do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Talking about as an agenda item?
Yeah, as an agenda item.
Okay, um, if no one else on a stand committee, how about anyone with, well, we have LaGrange Historic District Guidelines Committee, um, Mary, you've been working hard on that committee, you and Bill Lambline and Andrea, you have any report tonight for us?
We met last month and we're still trying to do a second review of the guidelines, so I think right now we left off at the appendix, so hopefully we'll be able to finish our second review and then work on formatting before bringing it to council for their review and feedback, but we'll be meeting again on the tenth at six P M.
Okay. All right. Okay, um, let's see, unfinished business, anyone like to bring up anything unfinished wise, you're welcome to at this time. Anyone? Anyone want to bring up any item for new business that you'd like for this council to think about discussing?
A meeting in the morning at nine A M., Mayor, I'll let everybody know that about the roundtable discussion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, at nine o'clock in the morning.
Anyone want to bring up anything new at this time? Okay, as Joe said, announcements, um, um, we do have this meeting, uh, this get-together, this informational session in the morning, um, at nine A M. at the little house behind, Mayor Carter's place, there on the alley, it's a continuation of what, what I refer to as our mayor's roundtable, that five or six of us been getting together for some number of months, I think Andrea's been at all the meetings, uh, and the get-together, it's, um, but the whole council is welcome in the morning to listen and, and take in what, what this meeting is actually up to, uh, I've talked to Amanda Manning about it, and Jane Ashley have been to her office and made them aware of, of we're trying to discuss some things there for our city, uh, Bill mentioned branding, um, I have no idea where, where this, this thing could go, but I think we're always open for more discussion of how we promote our city and how we're going to push our idea and our message out there to the, to the general public and to our people, I think especially with the creation of the Tourism Commission, I think that itself, uh, how do we, uh, put together a plan, whether it's one individual's plan of, of, of Andrea's with her, with her mural ideas, there's just so many things going in all of our heads that I think this is just a chance to harness all these ideas and try for all of us to be together, listening, and offer your comments and your suggestions, if you have any, and try to, uh, put together a plan forward for this city, uh, not sure where, where we're going to end up with any of this, there's no preconceived ideas on any of it, it's just a way of us continue to discuss how we promote our city for the future and what's going to be our message about this pretty little town. Uh, we, we all understand what we've all tried to do to this point with the quaintness of this town, our Main Street downtown, our historical preservation, you name it, we've tried to do it, but we're going to try to continue this discussion, and that will be in the morning at nine o'clock, and hopefully all of you all can be there, because there'll be a few more with exception of our council, but this is just a listening discussion opportunity to, to continue to talk about this. Don't forget, next Monday night, December ninth at six P M., we have another special cause city council meeting, this is specifically for the discussion of the Springs Park project. This is a major downtown idea of this Springs Park Committee, and this is one way of, uh, educating this full council on the, on the park idea itself, its financing of that park as we move into twenty twenty, uh, that's going to be a part of our budgeting to the point of what does this council be willing and put into the Springs Park idea, it's a great concept, but the architects will be there at six o'clock on December ninth.
Where?
At the library, the old library branch down here, so this council will be able to hear and also actually public to discuss, because once again, I've told the Oldham Mayor about that, so it will be a publicly advertised meeting on December ninth at six P M. I did, uh, present last week, Tuesday, to the Oldham County Planning Commission, our rezoning idea for East Main Street, myself presented, as well as Beach, and they gave us, I think there were fourteen members there, approved last Tuesday morning, a fourteen to zero approval, to move this idea and concept plan forward, so that's, that's, uh, took place last week.
Just, just to add on that, we have to wait thirty days for that decision to be final, and then it will come back to the city council for an amendment to the zoning map amendment, to the zoning map as it relates to East Main Street.
And then we'll have a, um, first reading on it.
Right.
And then a public hearing the second month thereafter, so, um, as I said earlier tonight, folks, Light Up LaGrange is this Saturday at six P M., and hopefully the council will come out, uh, please be there in front of the courthouse steps earlier than six P M., if you want to be one of the persons counting this down, please come and I want you to say something, so, uh, it's a way for you all to get, be here and be a part of this as well and be in the mix, and, uh, I hopefully see you five thirty, five fifteen, uh, Saturday afternoon, it should be a nice day, we hope. If I don't see you there, have a Merry Christmas. If you happen not to show up and I don't see you, have a wonderful Christmas, and I'll see you next year, maybe, but, uh, be glad to see you this Saturday if you can make it, but, uh, otherwise, uh, thank everyone for coming tonight, uh, thank the Oldham Mayor for always being here, thank the city employees for the time, thank you, Corey, for being here in place of Chief Collette, I don't know you gentlemen, yes, you, who are you tonight? Come forward, are you here for a, a study, study assignment or something, or?
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, come on up and tell us what you're studying, and give us your name and address, and tell us what you, what you got going on, buddy.
Well, I'm Joseph Boyd, um, I go to North Oldham High School, and I'm taking a government class this year, and I have a big project, pretty much what I have to do, where I go to a few, um, meetings for different cities, and I have to pretty much gather information and just put it all down in a binder to give to the teacher so she can see what it's like and see, you know, what's going on.
Okay, well, what do you think your report's going to report on us tonight?
I mean, I liked what I heard tonight, I mean, it was pretty interesting, um, I mean, I might actually be here on Saturday to, um, for the light up and everything, so.
I'll tell you what, thank you, sir, for taking interest in this, in this government process, and, you know, we need to get young people involved.
Yeah.
We need, we need your ideas, that's sort of what we're talking about tonight, um, how do we reach out to the younger people in this, in this discussion tomorrow morning at, at nine o'clock, how do we find out what's going on in your young mind, you know, that cities need to be looking at and be doing, you know, to track and keep you folks right here having a good time and working and enjoying this city and this community. So, well, he can't, he's got to go to school tomorrow, but thank you so much for coming tonight, and will you think you'll come back?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, well, we expect to see you here next month, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, glad to have you. Okay, nothing else, who wants to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion by Andrea, second by Leslie, oh, in favor, let me know, I'm saying aye, what? Anyone opposed? What are you laughing at?
Corey's the one who's laughing, we got to do something about Corey laughing all the time.